This meeting is called to order. You understand? Heavenly Father, we give thanks to you for bringing us together for another opportunity to bring glory to your name. We ask that you help us to make the decisions in the best interest of these citizens. These blessings and others we ask in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Salute, pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us, um, have a moment of silence and remembrance of Ms. Dana Goldman, daughter of our clerk, Ms. Sandra Goldman. Thank you. Roll call to determine.
Ms. Moore here. Mr. Bradford.
Here.
Mr. James Green.
Here.
Mr. Derry.
Present.
Mr. Locke here. They are all present.
Thank you. I think I'm going to just forego announcements, trust me, that we can get through this quickly and that we know that the air conditioner is not functioning at full capacity and the humidity is high, so let's work together on that if you please. Public comments as it relates to items on the agenda.
We have already had an announcement, Bachelor Louisiana, item number ten B, Resolution twenty-three, twenty forty-two, amended consolidated budget, general fund and all special revenue funds for revenue and expenditure for the city of Bachelor, Louisiana for the fiscal year beginning in July first, twenty twenty-two and ending June, June thirty, twenty twenty-three. I would like to act as board while we're going back to that fiscal year budget and what we've been amending there. We're going back to fiscal year twenty twenty-two up into twenty twenty-three. We want to go back and amend something in there. What are we going back to amend?
Uh, Mr. Anderson, we need to amend the budget that we finished up to give the final numbers of each category to know what's left over to do for this budget that we're in now. That's our tradition that you amend the current budget and you adopt the other one.
Okay, that's, uh, still as a clerk, I don't have no clarity on that. I know we're going back, but what we're going back to amend? Is there something we're going back to correct?
And what it's given, updated, there were things at the beginning that maybe grants and stuff that we got and we amended it because of grants and the revenues coming in. So that's the final, you have to, um, you have to adopt, you have to amend the current budget to be able to, uh, to adopt the present. That's the final numbers of what you got left over and what's spent and what the revenue is. Have you saw a copy of the budget?
Uh, the only, uh, I clicked, the only budget I got was the twenty-three page package that you gave last month, I think.
Right.
And that's all I have. I know that some more budget that came out, I'm not familiar.
It was, we have that, uh, in the office for review and we want, so is there anything particular that you want to add?
Yes, ma'am, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Okay, I can show it to you.
Okay, I noticed that in April fourth, twenty twenty-two, that the Morehouse Parish Sheriff's Department went into an agreement with this, with the city of Bachelor. That was not allocated in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. And that's what I'm getting at. Now, with that said, how are we going to correct that? We've got a half a million dollars already paid and it's still paying to the Sheriff's Department as we speak.
Right, but if, if this year's budget, there is no line item that says Sheriff Department patrol.
Okay, make my point. I had got to the other part where it said add the twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
Okay.
That's what I'm getting at later on in this conversation because there was a hundred and some thousand dollars, from my understanding, in that budget. Am I correct?
In what, not, not on this budget here.
Not on the twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
There is no line item for that. There is, there is where we amended what we actually see, uh, expense on that. It's in the police department's part of their budget. Um, find that number. And, and the new one, it's broken down to the shields itself.
But it's a difference. Excuse me, I'm in the interrupt, Mr. Green, did you want to?
No.
Not a quick, that's all right, ma'am, uh, ma'am. Uh, I was just trying to get at this budget for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. You're going to consolidate with the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. And, uh, I'm totally confused because what else is allocated for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget has not been discussed or finalized or presented to the public for inspection. I don't know what the amount of money the budget has for that particular year. And I understand, I will stand paying the Sheriff's Department for supplement pay patrol as I speak. You see, all that's still going on, you're working on the fifty percent finance for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget because you default.
Is you talking about for the patrol expenses for the Sheriff's Department?
Supplement where it stated down there, where you went into a contract agreement.
Because we budgeted for one forty, one hundred forty, one hundred forty thousand, eight hundred dollars and then we actually, you're today, as of June, this budget, I'm looking at June twenty-sixth. We, at that moment, we had spent two hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and it looked like a proposed budget for a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for the Sheriff's Department for twenty-three, twenty-four. Thank you.
But if you look at the, uh, there is no, no on that.
On, on the current budget.
Right, we're not, we're not budgeting that line item. Until they use it, they're, they're paid out of the shields to their field. Those shields as we get, uh, the third shield, then we'll pay out the fourth shield and when they get all staffed and that'll go away.
So previous, uh, previous year, you budgeted for a hundred and forty thousand dollars for the Sheriff's Department, right?
We did, yes.
So this year, you saying you're not budgeting for a hundred?
We're not going to budget that.
So.
Because y'all had said that as we get on the field, then we would stop using the Sheriff's Department. So we're gonna, we're breaking down the police department in shields. Right now, we've got one and two shields that city employs. As we use third and fourth and they cover those graveyard, they will be paid out of that shield. So it's going to be important that we get the people in so we don't have to pay the Sheriff's Department.
You just transferred it.
We're just, we're gonna.
So it's clear there, we just wait until it's finished.
Yes, sir, because if we did, if we did that, we'll be paying full amount for twenty-five people and benefits and pay the Sheriff's Department.
But you still got it allocated, it just broke down into shields.
Right.
So you don't have a line item, but you still got it and it just transferred it up. That's where you move the salaries when you get a police raise, you, you greatly increase it.
Right, there's no budget for it, that mean, that mean?
I didn't budget for the shift as a line item, they're filling those shields that's not filled.
Not a line item, but it's still budgeted for it under the.
Yes, sir.
Anticipating in, in, in the salaries, so therefore, when it comes to spending for the Sheriff's Department, it's unlimited at this moment. Because it's.
Now, would you say they're going to have to stay within their budget?
Well, I thought that, I thought, so where is, where are their budgets?
Their budget, twenty-five people. That, that's what he said, that you can do twenty-five people.
And that'll be, that'll be third and fourth, and third, fourth and fifth shield?
Third and fourth shield, yeah.
So what, who's the fifth?
The fifth is the patrol. You know the detective in the office, uh, the chief, know the city police. Right now, third and fourth shield are amended by the Sheriff's Department.
Okay.
My finish, my finish, I'll sit down and say, the last thing.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Dana.
The last thing on there was, uh, not American board, was the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. When was that discussed and when did y'all finalize that and present to the public?
It's not finalized, that's what this means for.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, go ahead.
I agree on that. Uh, in the last six weeks, I have received three different budgets. Which budget are we, uh, where?
The one that you got in your packet last week when you were out of town, I think you might have got yours Saturday.
Right.
That is the final budget.
Did that, was this?
Matter of fact, it's the same budget we got the last two meetings.
Okay.
Same idea, but I just changed the dates.
Okay, this budget, would this be the budget that you prefer?
I'm doing the budget that which I want.
Same budget you have.
You got here.
Three or four budget.
The one, the one, the budget here that we got, uh, that you're voting on now is the one that ends the projected fund balance for twenty twenty-four, it's three million, eighty-four thousand.
I have a question.
What, what, uh, what are you finished?
No, I'm, I'm trying to get the right budget before I can go on following on.
Yes, sir, well, if it was, if it was the one that you got Saturday night, that's the budget. And if your resolution is that you put the thirty-first, that's it.
Okay, Ms. Two, thirty, thirty-first.
Okay, um.
I should have got plenty.
The budget before we got this past Saturday, right? We had a budget that had year-to-date, um, June the twenty-sixth. Just follow me, but, um, so if you go to total general fund revenue, we budgeted for sixteen million, six hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-four cents. On this, on this budget, we actually used to this day, June twenty-sixth, we actually spent fifteen million, seven hundred and ten dollars and six hundred and twenty-one dollars, right? Uh, here you go. Okay, but now, when we get a, when we get this current budget, we budgeted for the same amount, sixteen million, six hundred and ninety-five dollars, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-four cents. But now we spend, this, this June thirtieth, this budget, June thirtieth, right?
It is, because after June thirtieth, we got our banks statement and we got some state money and we had to find out what it was for, so some of that changed.
Okay, so, but, but as of June thirtieth, we spent fourteen million, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eight hundred and sixty-two dollars, right?
Right.
So that's like a, from, from what you gave me four days prior to this budget, it's a difference in like a million some dollars.
Do you have to go and look at that line item itself for me to tell you? I didn't make notes of what the difference was, I was just going back and checking it. I know some of it was the difference in the pay.
Uh, even this is the difference, right?
The Sheriff's Department, the Police Department, Fire Department.
I get what you're saying, even this is the difference, right? It's the difference, maybe, maybe less money came in, but we just use it for example. But what we budgeted and what we actually spent, it's like almost two million dollar difference. So what that money, what would that money be? Because it's, and this, this June thirtieth, this right here is June twenty-sixth.
Okay, but that, just because it said the twenty-sixth money, just been my work in progress, it might not be in the actual twenty cents of that.
We'll throw the twenty-sixth off for, for your purpose. But, but I'm saying for the year end there, June thirtieth, we only spent fourteen million, but we budgeted sixteen million and this is the end of the year, so.
Well, a lot of that was part right off the bat was the Sheriff's Department, because at first, when we were working on it, we had the line item of doing June thirtieth.
Ms. Sandra.
Okay.
The Sheriff, the Sheriff Department come out of the police database, which was already budgeted at a million dollars for the prior year.
Well, not, it didn't come out of the, uh, budget for last year.
Still, if it didn't come, if it didn't come out, what I'm saying is we budgeted for sixteen million dollars and we only spent fourteen million dollars. So right there, that's a surplus.
Right, and that surplus is in this, this three million at the bottom of it, you see that? That's your surplus. When you take your, your revenue and your expenses and you do with your funds balance.
See, why, why it's tricky too, Ms. Sandra, because then at the beginning of this, this thing, you said that our budget would go up three million dollars. So if you take, if you already have a surplus of two point some million dollars, there's no way. The smartest person will.
When you, when you look at this here and you, you go to what the balance was of this current year, we just finished it, then you're, and then you look at the last row, that's the one we're trying to adapt to it. So at the end of your revenue and your expenses, it should be the three million. Okay.
Three budgets been put up.
Yes, sir.
You went from, the first time you gave us, we was in a deficit.
We were.
Right? At the second budget, it went to four hundred thousand dollars in a deficit. In this budget, we're not in the red, so in three weeks, the money, nothing changed, the bottom line changed, but now we're not in the red.
Well, at first, when we did it, we was trying to work with the four dollars. And then later, we then that, we keep, we just know what we can do that. Then we started working with what the Fire Department were asking. So then the Fire Chief got with me and he did some trimming on what.
I'm, I'm speaking about.
Let her finish.
Point of emphasis, point of emphasis.
Let her finish. Go ahead.
All right. So what we were talking about.
Before you finish, let's go.
I'll let you finish.
I'm just listening to his question.
Okay. We really got away from the gentleman.
Oh, yeah, so we don't come, we gotta come back to it. We was pushing, that's what's, but we was talking about two dollars, not four dollars. When the first budget came out, it was two dollars proposed, not four dollars.
Well, I, I remember y'all saying try to do four.
Um, who?
I think it was, y'all mentioned it, one of them, we tried to do four dollars and we tried to make that work. It wa, it was, y'all wanted to try to get four. And at, at first, they said, let's try to do the, the, the four for the starting people and not mess with the other one. And then y'all said, no, that ain't going. So that's what I was trying to work on, is the four. But it, we just couldn't do that.
Okay, ma'am, I know you skipped announcements, but I.
I, I, yeah.
Uh, you were the answers.
What Mr. Green said, he has.
Yeah, oh, I, I ended up skipping past announcement, what I wanted to make announcement was, maybe it was two weeks ago, that, um, maybe one or two city council meetings. Myself was, um, out for, and I owe this to my district, so that's why I'm speaking to him. Myself was, uh, out for a business conference, so I was, I missed maybe two, um, meetings. But also during the time when I got back, um, I got a call from Louisiana State Auditor, um, Department. And him and I talked and he asked a question for us, asking, like, council was actually just missing the meetings on purpose, which definitely wasn't true. And I also asked, because it was floating around that if we don't try to budget, will we lose state funding? His response to me was, the only funding we will lose would be grants, only if that grant specifies that a budget have to be in place. So at this moment, being that I had to speak to him, do we have any grant, Mary or Sandra, that stipulate that we have to have a budget in place?
Yes, sir, I know the lady said, I already told her, she said, right now, we are working on the twenty twenty-one budget. Fifty percent of the twenty twenty-one. And the reason why we're working on that, that is the last budget that we amended.
You got away from my question.
And on those years, our park grant and our sewer grant were not on that, in that budget.
So the, the grants language states that a budget has to be in place?
That's what they told us.
Uh-huh. Now, he told me that it be clear as day, that the grant would state, language-wise, that in order that the budget not in place, you would lose this particular grant. So that's why I'm asking them, because the reason I'm asking them, because what was put out for us, the council not sign a budget, we'll lose funding. And if that's not true, then this, we've been misleading our constituents and I don't want to do that conditionally.
Yeah, I agree, and I just know they said if a bill come in and it was for the parks and I couldn't cut a check, we're working on the twenty twenty-one amended budget and those grants were not even heard of then.
Yeah, I.
So because that line was not in there, then I, I couldn't do it.
Yeah, I definitely.
I'm just, I, I'm not disputing what you said, I'm done, that's what we were told.
Okay, yeah, and that's.
And that does concern me, because I've got a bill right now of a hundred and twenty-six thousand for parks and I don't know what to do about it. That's the only one that I know right now that is in my face.
Okay, and in that, in that, that particular grant specified it?
It's of parks.
I, I get it, but I'm saying, do it, do it actually say that?
Budget has to be.
That budget had to put in place if not?
I, I, I have to go back, I'm just telling you what.
Okay. For, for, all I can show, they just told me. Can you find out this for me, Sandra? Now, your soul, if not, if that wasn't in place, I would like for you to inform the people correctly.
Okay, um, when that budget has not been adopted, then you can only operate at fifty percent of your last adopted budget.
That would be twenty twenty-one?
Because we need to amend the budget of the twenty twenty-two, that's what we're doing now. At first, I thought we could work off the twenty twenty-two, but they said, no, you got to work out the twenty twenty-one. And so I said, I just want to do it right, so.
We need to, uh, Ms. Taffet had a question and we need to get back on track with that.
Go ahead, Ms. Taffet. I received the same phone call about us purposely missing meetings and of course, I explained my situation. I mean, he listened, took it into account, but the thing I had a problem with, the, the community received misinformation regarding the loss of state funding because we have not signed a budget the last two meetings. And with the auditor, he was real patient, he pulled up the city ambassador. He said, you're not injected losing state funding because you didn't sign the audit report. He said, you are injected losing state funding because your budget that was due on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two has failed to be submitted. He said, they have.
Not present, not present eventually.
The audit.
Audit.
The audit, I'm sorry, the audit report, I'm sorry, the audit report that was due on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two has not been, uh, uh, submitted. That, he said, this will be the reason why you lose state funding. He said, it's seven months late. He said, they did, um, file for an extension. He said, but you still injected losing state funding. So myself, I would like clarification to the public that we are not injected losing state funding because we didn't sign that budget, but we are injected losing state budget because our audit report has not been turned in.
Well, yeah.
And this came from the state legislator's office. And he said he couldn't get it to us in writing if we needed it.
And I would like to confirm, I was also after the same particular meeting, I talked to Mrs. Goldman about, hmm, I said, three, eight thirty-nine that morning, and I called, you said you were informing the mayor. But you knowing that Mrs. Taffet was not here and knowing that Mr. Green would be here, why would you all try to have a meeting and grandstand in front of K N O E?
Because we, we, we did that, we didn't know that. Now, we did know this more and Mr. Green was going to be out for the regular meeting.
But you knew that, you knew at nine AM that morning.
But, but it had already been posted.
Well, I knew it had posted, but, but you council, let me finish speaking. Because I don't believe you to stay grandstanding or this, and trying to throw this council up on the bus. If it were on Mrs. Goldman, I would not be there. She already knew that the two councils, the other three of them, at eight thirty-nine, she could have informed the mayor. No, what they did, they called the legislative office complaining about the counter, I have the letter here, okay? And the timeframe they came in, it, uh, timeframe they came in was eight forty, forty-three, sent, sent to, to Mr. Mr. Goldman, no, to the mayor, excuse me, you ought to never, let me finish, please. You ought to never call that meeting and grandstand this council that we would not be in no time. Let me finish talking about the, we had lightning strike. We had a meeting call, the mayor walked down the hall, complained about calling Attorney General. You went here, she went here. And anytime we submit, anyone of these councils submit a request for a, for a special reason, you all should carry out your duties from this day on, because the mayor don't, don't, don't do your duty, your duty is the first. And your, your duty is the, uh, the recorder. And if anyone of these councils called a meeting, you all should respond as properly as they notify you. K N O E don't call meeting for, this meeting we today haven't called properly. K N O E don't call meeting for, K T R Y don't call meeting for, the state Louisiana legislature don't call meeting for. We are governed by this charter. These meetings should be called accordingly and that, that won't be anybody that talking about, well, they are not here trying to get a permit, we're not doing our duty. Hey, what, what, what's wrong with y'all? Let me show my thing with you. From June, the middle of June, to the middle of August, it's vacation time for ninety percent of America. Most parents take their kids on vacation or their grandkids. By the way, I got a newborn granddaughter. And I really didn't get a job because every time I get a call, what's going on in Bachelor? You all be, why ain't y'all meeting? This city government, this government is governed by this board of auditors. This administration need to get your, your time, your audit report, I noticed in this agenda, I mean, in this budget, you went from forty five thousand to sixty five thousand. What are you paying a person for the K P on time? Well, I, what should get arranged for, you take, the, the, I think the range need to go to the park and recreation and the art, make the people to work and operate and carry this city on daily. We gotta stop this craving and be real, we're dealing with human being life. And and I, I, oh, oh, my woman, may, may I let her get my dog there, then I, I'm gonna sit back.
We have gotten away from the.
No, no, we don't, no, this is.
We have gotten away from.
This is the.
Ms. Tappin is waiting to make a statement, so.
Let me finish, she makes a statement, maybe I'll let it there, cause I'm not through, I wanna get to the bottom of it.
More time.
And and you claim that you had to hire Mr. Jones, let, let, let it all out, let K O E know it all, don't tell half of it.
This is not an item that's on this.
Well, 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 uh, K, K O E, she didn't have a budget ready, I don't think she got a budget ready now. As we speak, because we just got it two days ago, that's not a budget you can look at, we got, I don't see any department here sitting at this table, I want to question each department here. While they're asking for the amount of money they're asking for, and they're lying like, and they're not here. Why can we, how can this council, if I wanna ask the fireman, well, how many officers are, how many firemen you have, and I wanna ask you, chief of police, how many people you have in this, in this budget? Why do you need this particular money? You don't throw a budget on the floor in front of a council, and say, hey, uh, y'all shine here. Y'all shine here, we need to do this in a more respectful way. And Miss Goldman, I still want those contracts, I'm saying the public record. Contracts and no leases from you, and you should, if you're doing any kind of business right, you have all, all leases and contracts, and you have to bill all, and you could, you may print them off the computer. Give me a box of stuff to look through, that was, you're just studying me. And I'm, I'm not doing what I'm a year, but I'm coming back.
Mrs. Tappin.
I'm, I'm fine, I leave my time here, Mr. Goldman.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, that brings us to item, uh, number. It'll be item number five, recess bachelor sales tax, district number one meeting, okay, we're gonna recess to the bachelor sales tax. Okay, let's go, roll call.
Ms. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Bradford.
Here.
Mister, uh, James Green. Mister Dairy Green. Mister Locke, here, all present.
Okay, public comments, and they relate to items on this agenda. I think approved previous minutes, March nine, twenty twenty three. Item number five, resolution twenty three dash two zero four one. E S T one thirty two, amendment and operating budget and street projects for revenues and expenditures for the bachelor sales tax district. One for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty two, and ending June thirty, twenty twenty three. And adopted and operating budget and street project for revenue and expenditures for bachelor sales tax district number one and fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty three. And end in June thirty, twenty twenty four. What is your budget?
Okay, I make a, I make a motion.
Yes, ma'am, properly moved by Mrs. Tappin.
Second.
And second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion taken.
I, I oppose.
Okay, let's roll call.
Let the room go, I, I.
Ms. Moore.
Yes.
Oh, I can't go to that.
Yes.
Uh. Mister Bradford.
Yeah.
You're voting yes, yes?
No, I'm voting no.
Okay, no, okay. Mister, uh, James.
Excuse me, let me, I'm voting no to twenty two, twenty three, twenty three, twenty four, I vote yes to it, they combined, I don't know how you combine it, it should be separate, that's true definition issue.
The legislative auditor has a statement like this.
They had to let, well, tell, you tell that legislative officer, Fratton Paul, yes, and no to the twenty three, twenty, twenty two, twenty three, and no to twenty three, twenty four. Let that legislative officer, next to the other call.
Ms. Powell, change with your.
The Dairy Green.
Classification, I think. It's just what the discussion they had a few minutes ago.
This year, the budget year is the street money, that we're redoing our streets, we have a half set sales tax. And if you're looking at your packet, it, it explained in a letter. Uh, it's say, it's stated that we're gonna, uh, do some hot pageant, more than what we have in. And we're, uh, finishing up the street project we're doing now. And then that big street bridge, we're gonna redo that one.
That's in the twenty three, twenty four budget, that correct?
It is.
Not the twenty two, twenty, uh, twenty two, twenty.
Now, that's what we're planning to do with this budget.
Okay, 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 that's right, uh, uh, yes, with that, that's what it is.
Wait, yes, ma'am, do you need a voting? I know.
Yes, I know.
What is your, what is your place with Mr. Bradford?
I, I, I think I explained myself well, I'm gonna do it again, I was not here in twenty three, I'm in twenty two and twenty three, but hold on, whatever you done, but twenty three, twenty four, I vote yes. Twenty two, twenty three, I vote no.
That's not the way it was presented.
Uh, that's the way, it, it, that's why.
Okay.
You're gonna step in, you're.
It's a lot.
Tell me about it.
Your vote.
I'm gonna go by Mr. Gell, she does, sir.
Mister Green, was yours?
Yes.
Maybe the vote yes, okay. Okay, you got four yeses and one no.
Motion carries, okay. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm gonna motion.
Properly moved by Ms. Tappin.
Mayor, can we go back, did anybody make the motion for the previous minutes or seconded?
It was silent.
Okay.
Okay, I, I, we probably just missed. Are you talking about the minutes for the special call meeting, Miss Goldman?
No, ma'am, this one here was, it wasn't special call meeting, but it was the one on the sales tax, it was actually in May of twenty twenty three.
Okay.
The sales tax meeting.
Okay, well, I'm, I make a motion to approve those meetings, because you called me March nine, twenty twenty three, for the sales tax district number one.
Thank you, okay, Mrs. Tappin has made a motion, is that second?
Second.
Second by Mister Locke, all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
So I, I oppose, I sustain, I wanna sustain on that, I was not the council at the time.
Okay, at this time, did we complete all of that, Mrs. Goldman?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the sales tax district, uh, meeting. We think, we, we went through that, we went back, I will entertain, who made that motion?
I'm.
Miss, Miss Tappin made the motion and seconded.
Actually, Mister Locke.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, okay, let us resume. Go back, go back to item number seven, on our regular agenda. Roll call, attorney for.
Ms. Moore.
Here.
Mister Bradford.
Here.
Mister James Green.
Yep.
Mister Dairy Green.
Present.
Mister Locke.
Here.
Mayor, all present.
Thank you, item number eight, consideration of and action on reports of committees appointed of the governing body, finance committee report.
Mayor, this item was left over for my regular meeting, we didn't, we wasn't able to have it, so that's what, we just put it back on this.
I would like to table this until the, um, next meeting, the finance committee report.
I'll take it then. Okay, Mrs. Tappin has made a motion to table the finance committee report to the next meeting, and Mister Green seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, mayor, motion carries. Item number nine, action on ordinance and resolution introduced at previous meetings. Eight, ordinance two and three dash four and two seventy one, and ordinance to authorize an act of sale by the city of Bachelor to sell adjudicated property described as parcel. Four, three, zero, 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 one, zero, 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 Y, Y. Uh, commencing at the corner of the southeast, thirty five dash twenty one, five east. And run with south line of said section thirty five, fifteen, sixty two, point fifty eight feet. Run with the parcel, same course, one hundred eighty three point eighty six feet to the northwest corner of Rosina White. Second purchase from Daisy Thompson, with the line of the Rosina White, second purchase, one hundred eighty six point three feet. Through the south, eighteen degree, twenty two, minimum east, two hundred point four feet. Through the north, uh, eighty four degree, minimum west, seventy four point eight feet through W. Seventy five feet, five east, in accordance with the L A revised statute forty seven, twenty two, zero, two. E T, that's the Q and the authorize, and to authorize the mayor of Bachelor to sign all necessary documents. And to address other matters relative there to, Miss Goldman.
Mayor, put this out for bid in the Cortavia's Hanes, bidding on it, it was for fourteen twenty two, fourteen twenty four, and fourteen twenty six, Rosina. Their bid was sixteen hundred dollars.
Okay, sixteen hundred dollars, okay, this is a resolution introduced at the previous meetings, we're ready for a vote, take action on it. I'll entertain a motion.
I'm, I'm making a motion.
I'll take it.
Properly moved by Mrs. Tappin, and seconded by Mister D Green, any question, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Other new business, discussion revenue generation through dedicated instruments to supplement budget shortfalls in order to provide annual funding. Of employee salary increase to offset employee cost of living increases and increase job market competitiveness. Okay, this is, um, an item for discussion. We worked to achieve that two dollars per hour increase for the police department. Something was done for the fire department, and the way each one worked, they work a little differently than the other. And you all recall the firefighter lawsuit which was settled, so we don't wanna get into another situation that creates a problem. But this is an opportunity to talk about options.
At least give the other employees some type of raise.
I think that's a very fair question, Ms. Tappin, and as we, uh, faced with, you never wanna exhaust all your money. As we're fan, sitting here now, we have HVAC system that's forty five years old. And it, the last assessment through the engineers, it was gonna cost two million dollars, I've been shopping for grant money to see, but grants offer no guarantee. So that will fall back on us to be creative and figure out what we're gonna do in the event that there is no grant, then you have to think about the timeline, so. We're gonna have to do something pretty quickly with this HVAC system.
Okay, can I, so we.
Okay.
What is, what is our city ratio of bachelor, I mean, what, what do we work, what is the ratio of bachelor, how do we rate it, our city ratio? Do you know?
What do you, what do you?
Our city ratio, our rating? No, no, our city overall ratio of this city, what are we, one, two, three, how, you know, what is our standard, I guess?
Five?
No, no, for, for the whole city, what is the city ratio?
How is the ratio based?
Well, yeah, what is our ratio based, what are we, one, two, three?
I'm asking, I'm asking how, how is it?
I mean, we in good shape, let me, let me break it down, we in good shape, bad shape, no shape at all, financial, the city. You understand what city ratio mean?
We could be better, we're not, we're not broke, but we can definitely be better.
Okay, 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 now, the question, we're not broke. Not broke, but you're not, now, on a scale of one to five, what would you put it?
I don't know, cause I, to me, three million is enough for the city of Astor Town.
Uh, uh, I know what I'm trying to get, Ms. Goldman, I asked for the city ratio, I'm trying to establish, what, what, what are we, are we in good financial, uh, we have enough money to operate? For, for this year, next year, you have, what kind of money do we have, what do we work, what can we say?
Down to three million.
Three million? Uh, the, the.
Not in that nothing breaks down, or whatever.
But our city, but the city ratio, every city, Miss, Miss, Miss Tappin should be raised, you know, the ratio you should, we're in good shape, Mister Bradford. We, 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 we're, we're in bad shape. Uh, I mean, I'm talking, but you, I don't know, for a minute, ma'am, please, what, please, you want, Mister.
Mister Bradford.
You're teaching me, I'm going back to the.
Uh, well, you know what, to grill, to grill Miss Goldman, and ask her, things can change on any given day.
Where the audit, where the audit, where the Mrs. Sidney, Mrs. Sidney, what she get, she asked. She, now, you, we ain't talking financial, Dr. Audit, we talking financial, mayor, you asked us, what can we do, and then you asked me for my opinion, now you wanna cut that off?
You're grillin'.
I'm not, Miss Goldman, I'm trying to get, uh, to clarify where we are from city government. Now, I, I can ask you, you know, you're the mayor, you're the one, I thought, why I was.
I, I, I read everything I, I put out, what I was, what I was about to say.
Oh, yeah.
What I was about to say.
Go ahead.
Mister Bradford. Situation's changed, tomorrow, we come in, if this HVAC is shut down completely, that's a change. Right there, we, we don't know what is going to hit us, we have to be prepared. We cannot spend, or it would not be prudent to spend surplus when you don't know, uh, the fate of what's gonna happen on any given day.
Mayor, that's, that's my question, my, my question, you're gonna go ask again. Are we, I'm, I'm keep it on, are we in good shape, are, are, do we have enough money to operate right now for the next year, year and a half, are we, are we about to be taken over by the state administration? I mean, at least being that your financial people, they are perishing, no. I put my vacation research.
We'll be able to manage other, but we, we don't have it just to blow, we need to manage our budget.
Nobody ever been in blow, I don't appreciate blow.
We need to manage our budget.
Let me what's the condition.
And if you use your fund balance that you have here, that is not reoccurring money. Recurring to give in salaries, you need a tax, you need a sales tax, you need the reoccurring money. This money here that we got over is bits and pieces left over in our budgets that we could emulate.
Okay, the city of Bachelor, one hundred years old, have three million dollars, that's what you say? Over, over our, over our yearly operation expense, I've been trying to break it down quickly, we have three million dollars.
Yes.
For one hundred year, uh, uh, Mr. Pavel.
If all the revenue that we say we're gonna get comes in, we should do that.
No, 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 what do we have now, that, that's speculating, now, I wouldn't look right now.
Right nandy, to look at the bottom of that, I'll change it right here.
There, tell me right now. Are we going back and forth about raises, we, I think we get raises, and we don't know what we work, you know, I'm not gonna, my child, lounge, and I don't have it.
I think your, your projected is six point five.
Six point five million?
Yes.
And, and that's all we have, well, that's the jack, that's not, that's not, that's what we're working.
No, that's true.
Six point five, that's the budget. Let's, let's, you know, answer the question, what our, what our current, uh, rate, what, what, what we work. Otherwise, we wanna go to the bank, do we have, we credit rating?
We do have the credit.
What, what, what's our credit rating?
It was an A plus the last time we had, uh.
We got an A plus credit rating?
Yes.
Okay, and, and, and we're, we're, you take all the accessories of City Bachelor, we can sell in eighty days, plus the cash, what do that come to?
I don't know what that figure is.
You know, which, which audit gave them, because, because, we have to take all that into consideration, but we think about getting any rate, moving any kind of money for the future, we don't know that, we don't know which way we can go. I mean, that, that, that's financial, if you don't know you have enough money to, you ain't gonna buy a new car. We need to know, before we give the raise anymore, this city need to say, hey, this is our ratio, our ratio is a one point zero, one, zero, zero. Point one is operate, operation for Mr. Pavel. Two, you have enough, you, 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 that's country, most, 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 uh, Mr. Pavel, United States forty five, sixty percent of runs on the, one of, one point five or two. And then, if you got a three, and I hope that you have, here, we can talk about raising, because you got too much money, you, you, you got a three, you got money put somewhere, but you not provide this service. So, uh, if not good to have too much money, they don't provide service to the citizen, that's their money. And shit on it, that's why we just know what we work, can we, can we do more work, can we do more lawn work, can we do more, uh, level, you know, town, do we have any kind of money that we can make our city beautiful? Do we have any kind of money we can give our police officer, our fire officer a raise? Those are things that we need to be talking, especially when you get into touch with financial. If you don't have it, go back and forth, a jacket, this, that, may come in, that may come in, that's not down to the question. Ask any, uh, whoever she is, uh, that, that, excuse me, uh, she the audit, I see that she going from, she asking for in this budget, she going from forty five thousand dollar a year to sixty five thousand dollar a year. And you can't get two dollars to the park and recreation and the working people in this community? Come on, man, we can't hold this money back and play with it, we, those, these people, them hardworking people, they should get the job, but they, 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 they make, they make our city operate. And that's working the law, remember, Lee, you're working the.
Um, we have a comment of suggestions, you want to put this guy, but it's just Jay Green first. Jay Green, okay, you said you want some suggestions.
Yes.
To start by, when we analyze this budget, if you over budget each department, if you budgeted right and still are over budgeted, that's a start. Because when you over budget, it handicaps everybody, because there's nothing in the general fund. If a grant or something come about, a loan, you can't get it because you allocated all the money out. Now, when you look, because, where, I say they over budget, you can go back a couple of years, they always, each department always turning in two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand back to the general fund, so let, let me know, you're over budgeted. So if you streamline the budgeting process, then you can start, that's a start, by budgeting. By budgeting in a proper manner. When you budget it right, then that's money for everything else. Because if you overbudget it, it's still there, but it's tied up. It's gonna be in the general fund anyway. So if you leave it in the general fund, if, if somebody wants something, you can always come back to the council, because the money's still there.
That's what we do. The reason why you over, we were overbudgeting a fireplace that we had so vacancy there. If it wasn't for that, we wouldn't have that.
What about public, what about public work today?
Well, it works. We did have some vacancy, but we're trying to get them feel really good.
No, no, I'm talking about overbudgeting. I'm talking about each department for the last couple of years, they've been returning hundred thousand, two hundred thousand.
We try to encourage them, just 'cause you have it in your budget doesn't mean you get to go and just spend it.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, you say you want an idea. That's a start.
Yes, sir.
If you streamline, because the money is gonna be in the general fund anyway.
Right.
It's not going anywhere.
Right.
So it's there, but don't overbudget, because what you do when you overbudget, you tie everybody's hand. The council, if somebody wanna do something, they come and say, oh, we don't have the money. But actually, at the end of the year, you gonna have the money, 'cause it's gonna go back to the general fund. What I'm saying is, budget accordingly, and leave it in the general fund, and if they fall short, it's still there. They can always come before the council, and we can, we can up the pay, or up whatever we need to do. But you never gonna get to that point if you overbudget.
I don't think it's overbudget issue. And the difference, when you look at the budget, where it's got the six point five in the twenty twenty-two versus the three, a lot of our American and rescue money. We've got all the money, but we not spending it. We got payoffs out, and we're waiting for that stuff to get here. So when you look at the difference of those two budget, the difference is your American money. That we got all the money, but we, we got a fire truck that's over five hundred thousand. That's the first thing we've ordered. It's not even made yet. So those, that's the difference, I want y'all to understand that. When y'all hear a three, a three million, then you hear six million, we got to spend it all what's approval. And that's what we did with it. We, we did the, uh, rereg the dry mosses building and painted that. We did, we spent ninety-nine thousand dollars on docks and gym. So all that was our rescue money. We're still gonna do the match, to finish the city's match of the parks and that grant. Rerouting this building, we've got a grant, but we got a match, it's coming out of America. There's a lot of projects that we've used that, but we hadn't actually spent the money.
I understand that. I understand, exactly what you're saying. I'm not referring to that. I knew the grant, for the park and all that, that was not even included in the budget. We know where it's coming, I'm not referring to that. I'm talking about revenue, not grant money, not set aside money. I'm, I'm well aware of what you're talking about. I'm talking about revenue. You see, you understand it? See, docks and park, that come from a grant or whatever it was. I'm not referring to...
It's in the budget.
Exactly, I'm not referring to that. I'm referring to...
The day that they operate.
You, you, you correct, you know what I'm referring to. That's what I'm getting at. So if you stop overbudgeting, just like when I looked at cemetery, we don't get to that. You got, you, you paying salaries for cemetery, great. But then you got a, uh, a hundred and forty thousand dollar budget, and on thing, we don't pay for graves, only thing we do is mow the graveyard. Why do we, why is there a hundred and forty thousand dollars?
And, and we could, 'cause we can, we can amend the budget to move this elsewhere, so meaning that if, if you look for, you look for advice on how to get raises. So it's, it's actually cheaper to take care of the people that you have here than going to... So if, if you take care of the ones you have, meaning that you can always cut back, and just give an example. Environment court, man, we normally budget for seven hundred dollars, now we overbudget for thirteen thousand. But the council, like, what's the purpose? We can, we can amend the budget, go back to seven hundred dollars, and we can use that excess money to go with the salaries to cover raises for our city workers. So you don't have to, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So you don't, you, you really, even if they overbudget, what we can do as a council, we can amend each line item, to specify what we wanna do with that over, that overage, that surplus. So, so just like, just like Mr. James said, if a hundred and forty thousand dollars is overbudgeted, 'cause we not utilizing. You can say, hey, as a council, we gonna amend the budget, but that hundred and forty thousand dollars replacing permanent works or potential raises for them. And again, it's cheaper to, it's cheaper to give them raises to hire new people, because you don't have to pay, right? And then they, they keep as well.
So when you said a hundred and forty thousand, what item are you speaking on the cemetery?
I was looking at the cemetery.
'Cause I only see salaries, forty thousand. So I just wanna clarify.
You got about three different budgets, I gotta give back to the one.
You have the one in the package today.
I can give you one, I can give you one legal, um, legal additional piece. We normally budget for sixteen thousand dollars. For some odd reason, we budget for fifty thousand dollars now. And here we are, we about to get ready to the place, um, hopefully, um, get us two city attorneys. So additional fees can go back to sixteen thousand, we can use that, what's it, thirty-four thousand?
Well, if, well, if they don't wanna be an employee, and they wanna be a contract, you're gonna...
They come, they come before the council.
Yes, right, but the way you pay it is the way you urge it.
So, Ms. Andrew, if, if we about to, next one, we about to approve two city attorneys, why are we looking for additional attorney's fees anyway?
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, what are you gonna do, and they pay for that?
Pay what you mean, why, why would we utilize it?
Okay, so...
Because I don't understand why we busting out the budget anyway, 'cause we, we budget for sixteen thousand, but we only utilize, we utilize forty-some thousand. Meaning that, is this part of the amendment that we doing today? Because amendments, interchange that took place from the previous budget. So we need to know what amm, what amendment took place for the council. We not just gonna agree on, that's amend the budget. We need to know what line item that, that took place, that needed to have a change, increase, decrease. By just saying, we gonna amend the budget, that open up too many questions, and have the council belaboring for too many different changes. 'Cause if you, if you amended something from the twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
Right.
That mean you need to tell us line item, not just, hey, things have changed. We need to know what changed. Did it change for the goods, did it change for the bag? 'Cause then, if it changed for the bag, then it's, then going into twenty-three, twenty-four budget, we need to make our adjustments at that moment. But just amending the budget, um, tell the council, that, that opened up too much.
No, I mean, Dee Dee is completely right. And like the legislative auditor said, we can come back in and change, amend this budget at any time.
We saw, and we did that.
Yeah, and I can agree with, we giving all the employees a raise, and we can cut, just like...
'Cause, can you tell me, when was the last time the city was dictating on a surplus going into the previous year?
We've never done that since I've been here.
So, so you, you never have a surplus?
We've always had a surplus.
This one, right, so this one's saying, so we always have a surplus, meaning that, well...
We should always have a surplus.
I get what you're saying. Meaning that, what Mr. Green was saying, that pretty much been an overbudget. Meaning that we can cut back from some place and put it elsewhere to get these potential raises. Hence why it's important for you to tell us, how much would it be, how, what's the cost for bringing on a new city worker?
Okay, so what, what do you, what depends on what they're doing? When you say a new city, police, if you have fire and police, they have a certain schedule.
Okay, so, so, just go back to city workers, right? Parking wreck. So are we overbudgeting, or are we budget precise?
We're, we're budget precise, people.
So how many?
People, vacancies and all that.
So how many slots?
Parking? Yes, because they were, they were behind. I think they got the most parts due than the rest of the department. Street department's got the less.
So how many, how many slots are we budgeting for, for parking?
I don't have that with me, but we do have slots there.
Okay, so, meaning that, now we short handed.
We are short handed.
So we, we taking upon, this, this one, follow me up. So we, we taking upon the budget that we gonna budget for a full scale, uh, of the work, right? A parking wreck.
That's right.
So that money, that money there, that mean that's overbudgeted. What you can do is, you can utilize those slots to get potential raises, and you still will come up.
We just have short, we just don't have people.
Right, you don't have people.
Well, the street department, though, they had six people. So let's give them a raise.
Yeah, we definitely got, we definitely need to give them raises, also...
We need people to use the overs that we got over.
But also, with, with the, the slots, this vacant that we budgeting, we can spread out that, that dollar amount that we budgeting for across the board for the ones that's there, and potentially bring in new hires. Because if we, if we making do off six employees, you know, we definitely should take care of those.
But y'all do understand, this money at the bottom is one-time money, it's not reoccurring. So once you get these raises and it eats that up?
Now, you want, Ms. Andrew, how? When you have a surplus, you know what surplus is doing, talking about?
So you never intend on having, if they got six people in the streets, six people's in.
I just asked you, what I asked you was, has it ever been a time that the city didn't take upon a surplus? You said never. So that mean, listen, so that mean that we always budget for the slots that we have, and we, and vacant.
That's right.
So if, if we make our dollar, if we do our raises, and also do a raise, and give potential raises already there, for the amount that we already budgeted for, we gonna take upon a, we gonna take upon a surplus regardless.
And just like, I'm sorry. And just like this audit expense, she's going up twenty thousand dollars?
Well, they're requiring lower and lower to stay their job, and a lot more to do.
But, but we gonna pay twenty, we gonna give her a twenty thousand dollar bonus?
Well, that's what, that's what I budgeted based on that, it may not take that.
So what if we don't, okay, I don't agree with that.
Okay, so you want me to take it to what, what you're going to thinky?
She was at forty-five, I think, but we...
The point is, money was there, and they used it, they're not gonna use that this year, so.
But I don't think you see that anywhere in this budget board by a man.
No, 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 you missed the whole, but you, I'm such, I'm talking about over budgeting.
Right, huh.
And I'm not talking about specifically budgeting for any item. I'm telling you, and I'm making a, if you, you wanted some input, that's my input, I'm tell, I'm, my, from my point of view. Looking at the budget, it's been over budgeted in different departments, and I just gave you a primary example. They've bought four trucks, that wasn't planned for, four-wheelers that wasn't planned for. So, that's about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, it's not reoccurring. What, what, what you gonna do with that hundred and twenty that they've been spending, over in the budget? That's all I'm saying.
I, I, I understand what you're saying, I don't have.
Yes, ma'am.
I know exactly what you're saying, and I think you repeated it a couple times, I definitely understand what you're saying.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
And you got the concept of what it worked towards.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Can we have something of, what did we cost? For our public service, our public, would people can get a raise at two dollars?
You wanna figure two dollars, okay.
What would it cost? I think, and then bring that back to us.
Now, when you say everyone, you say everyone but fire and police, everyone?
That's already, our, already budgeted.
Right, I'm, I'm just saying, when you say a two-dollar raise, you mean everybody that's not a fire or police? That would include everybody.
Yeah.
Fire and police, I, I just trying to get a direction.
I think that would be fair.
Okay.
And just bring it back, you said, you never said we gonna approve it, but we.
You wanna say it?
Yeah, if you do that also.
Like you have to rock whistle up, were you finished?
If you do that, you gotta remember, the difference between an ordinance and a resolution. So, if you do this, you got, you come back, you say you wanna do all the employees, right?
That's, that's what he asked me today.
That's what I'm saying, you wanna.
He said he wasn't gonna say his, even he wants to get.
You gonna do a study.
What you say that?
So.
And then we might be able to look at the budget, and put it in the budget.
I just want everybody to be aware that the difference between an ordinance and a resolution, re-budget, you know, a resolution is something that you planned on doing. An ordinance means it's coming, so if you think we need to reanalyze for at least two dollars, make it a, you know, either.
You guys need to figure out.
Yes, ma'am, either, no, no, ma'am, the two dollars.
It's already in there, the two dollars is already in this one here.
I understand it's in there, but listen, this is a resolution, we doing about resolution this year.
We can do it in resolution.
Okay, so we're not doing about, we're not, we.
An ordinance is a law.
I know, we.
I, I have a question, Ms. Andrew. Like, the twenty, the twenty-one, twenty-two budget, like, just for the, um, the wreck, um, the parking wreck salary, that's right? So we budgeted for two hundred and fifty grand, can you follow me on?
Yeah, I will, let me, hey, Chuck, go ahead.
We budgeted for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we, and end of June thirtieth, we spent one hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. We took over a hundred thousand dollar surplus.
Right.
So, this year we budgeted for two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, five, nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Right.
What changes did you see?
The change was, was that last year we were shorthanded.
Okay.
And, and this year, we counted those people that was here, and counted what it took for them to, to get to where they can handle parks. And those positions were budgeted with benefits.
So, so that would, even the vacancies was budgeted, right?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Because they're, the companies said, Mr. Henry, we need people, this is what we need, and they sat down with me and told me what they needed.
The reason I'm asking, because last year we took upon, we took over a hundred thousand dollar surplus. So this year we budgeting for two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, which is almost six thousand dollars less than what we budgeted for last year. Even if they came to you and told you, hey, we need more people, we still budget less.
That, that's what, that was, that was the figure, they said, this is what we need, this is what we need to pay these people.
So, a, a, as it is now.
Now, I don't think there are as many vacancies and parks as it is the other COVID works. Because we, this has been mowing season and park season. And two, they do use some work release, and we don't have to pay benefits for them.
I, I, the reason I was kinda asking was because with the surplus that we take, that we take over each year, just from this particular category of line items, salary, you don't think.
So you, you want me to give the two dollars for everybody that's not fire and police? But then you want, you don't wanna add, you don't wanna, take away the, the vacancy.
I mean, and you just, if you just let me finish this one second.
I think probably would be, be a, be a sufficient, we do it probably, I think, what I'm gonna look at.
What I was asking, Ms. Andrew, is that the surplus that we take from this line, particular line item, which is a hundred thousand dollars. In this particular group, parking wreck, do you not think a hundred thousand dollars is enough to increase the pay in the public, in the parking wreck department? As well as increase the store and pay, you said, I wanna know with a hundred dollars.
I'm looking, because you're gonna give them two dollars, but then your fight, and your retirement's gonna go up too, and your workman's comp. Cause your workman's comp is based on what you have.
I understand it, but, but, but not the ones that we have in place.
One, one question, ma'am, just go. Why do we need a, a financial advisor if we have a city auditor?
Well, they can't, the city can't advise us financially, but fin- financials would be like, if we go and get a loan or a bond or a rent, that we usually get those people there.
Okay.
Usually work with billboards and all, and they do the numbers, city cannot, she, she can't do that, and they are auditor too. She has to be completely independent.
Okay.
Like, for example, for the, I'm, I'm just going by line, the street department, we budgeted last year for three hundred and nine thousand dollars, right? And we only spent one hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and, and forty-nine cents.
Right, and I do know one of them was a salary that we was, that we did save there, but.
Would that grant, would that, any part of that pay?
Not, not in the street, would they?
So, so that, so that two, Ms. Andrew, from that, that particular line item is a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-one cent surplus from last year, going into this year. And even this year, we budgeting for three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars, which is roughly maybe a forty-some thousand dollars increase in budget. So again, I asked, just, that's, that's two departments, so four, if you add them up, that's, that's almost three hundred thousand dollars.
But then you can say in this year, I, I didn't slide there, but, but I'll do it both ways for you, you can look at.
So, I was trying to refer back to him when he said, when Mr. Green said over budget, and we, as councilmen, we can just amend the bu- budget for those particular surplus money? Being that if we move it elsewhere, it's still be what we budgeted for, it won't be like we lost. If, if we use, it, it go back to the general funds, which, which is general funds pay our employees, going back to the general funds. And I, them just two departments, we're just, right now, I'm talking to you that I just did the math on, it's like, almost three hundred thousand dollar surplus. So, I mean, the money is kinda there to do the raises, I mean, is that not enough money to do raises?
I think they all deserve it, I think.
So, can, can we sit down? Mary, would you allow me?
Let me sit down, and then I'll just give it to y'all, and y'all look over it. Get it out from vacation, so.
Please go, we'll provide, this is for discussion, this is to get ideas, be mindful, we're taking the same money and, and, and putting it somewhere else. We, we're faced with this HVAC system, and we don't know what else is going to happen. And to say that we'll get a grant, we can't count on the grants, I think we got fortunate with COVID, it was an unfortunate situation. But, it did help us with purchasing major big-ticket items. But, if no grant is funded, what are we gonna do about a two million dollar HVAC system?
Well, Mary, I, I gotta kinda gotta answer for you. Just at the end, just at the end of this year, you just stated that we have six point seven million dollars.
Well, we're doing it, but we're, okay, go ahead.
Three point seven million dollars, but at the end of each year, if you, if you go, if you go by, if you go just, if you just do this type of math, what you budgeted for minus what you actually spent? And general funds from last year was like two point two million dollars. What I'm saying is, you can keep all the budget money the same, but just that excess surplus, move it elsewhere, and you still gonna take upon a surplus. Because you, 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 I'm not telling you to increase, no amounts, I'm telling you with the amounts that you are budgeting for, that surplus money you have there, just spread across the board. Cause it, all the surplus money going to the general funds, which if we leave, if we leave the budget just like it is now, at the end of next year, we gonna have another surplus for one to two million dollars.
I hope so.
Uh, we all do, but just say, if we don't change, and we keep it as is, there's gonna be another surplus, add on top of the surplus we have going into this year, so that'll be a, that'll be almost four mi- four million dollars, Mary, just off the last two years, and how much is that HVAC system? Oh, we can buy that all right. I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, based on, based on simple calculations, what we have in front of us.
The complexity of, of, of.
If we have a decline in revenue.
We did, we have had a decline in revenue. Matter of fact, if you look, just standing here, we have spent more than we've earned. We've been doing that for the past few years.
Yeah, cause we, I can, I can see you doing it, especially with being over budgeting.
No, I'm talking about actual, what we spent, not budgeting, what you spent has been more than what we bring in.
Well, how do we?
And that's why, and that's why you got your surplus, you bring your surplus up for the next year. You know, if you, that's what you gotta do, it's in the bank, you, that's left, left over. But that way, when you ask for a grant or an emergency happened, you don't have to go to the bond commission and ask for our money.
So you said we spend more money than we.
We have it, if you look at the budget, you, what your revenue was and your expanded it was.
So, 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 so just go, just for us, cause you kinda threw me off then, just, just go, help me out, just go to, go to total general funds revenue. That's sixteen million, six hundred ninety-five dollars and eighty, three hundred twenty-two dollars and eighty-four cents. That's what we budgeted for, we budgeted for sixteen million dollars, and we only utilized at the end of June thirtieth, fourteen million, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eight hundred and sixty-two, um, dollars and twenty-nine cents. That's like a two point two million dollars surplus. We, we, that's the fourteen million dollars, we budgeted for sixteen million. You're, you're, you're today meaning that everything at the end of June thirtieth, right, Ms. Andrew?
We actually budgeted, we actually budgeted eighteen, but, but we actually, uh, spent was thirteen. But then we got that big rescue money, is that what you're looking for, the general fund?
You just owe me some new numbers, yeah.
Looking for the twenty twenty-four?
Ms. Andrew, I was just looking at, the new budget, this budget right here.
Okay.
I was looking at just general fund. At the end of general fund, sixteen million, six hundred ninety-five thousand dollars, three hundred twenty-two dollars and eighty-four cents, right? Of, of last year.
Okay.
We, the year to date, of June thirtieth, we only utilized fourteen million, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents. Which will be a two point two and some change million dollar surplus. Yeah, that's two million, that's two million dollars.
The general fund, that's the rate, yeah, that's the revenue, that's the rate.
I know, and, and the revenues subtracted when we budgeted, that's a two, two point two million dollar surplus.
Right.
Hence, what I'm saying, that we keep the amounts, but spread them out elsewhere, we still, we use, we still would take on a two point seven million dollars surplus of nothing change. So that'll make, that'll be one, two million dollars on top of two point two million dollars, that'll make four point four million dollars, and your, I mean, your system is two million dollars, and we still would be good at two million dollars.
I have another observation, when I can. Um, I'm going to court. I would anticipate the revenue, where we would budget to twenty-five hundred dollars. As of June, we only made two hundred dollars, why is that, I mean.
I, I don't know.
We're not writing citations, but we're not writing citations, I think, our community is a mess. It's a mess, it's a bunch of parked cars everywhere, I know it's ordinances to prevent all that, so why isn't our environmental court running? We have an environmental officer, but I don't think he's writing citations at all, that's potential revenue. So we shoot down ourselves in the foot by not utilizing potential revenue, it's at a standstill, I just need to know why, why?
There are so many, um, laws that we have to operate by. And, the code enforcement officer has been giving letters, and over the years, people have gotten really, really smart. Not picking up the letters, not signing for the matters, playing dodgeball, then you have the adjudication process. Then you have, uh, the problem with going on private property and, and using taxpayer dollars. So we're open to whatever suggestion, I, in fact, I have Vivian making notes, Ms. Goldman, um, so forth, we've talked about the same money. The same money. Are there any new ideas?
Miss Lockman.
That's money.
Yes, sir.
We have too many explicit causes for people to get away with, um, in a, um, citation. They have to go back and forth to court, have to do this, we as a council, we're the city council, we need to look at that, to cut down on some of those audits, because going back and forth. They get a citation, then you go to court, the judge said it'd be just, it's just too many steps in it.
I think that's what I'm hitting at, when Mr. Green was saying we paying all this to make this, but that's more than what court was done, you know that, than just run stuff through environmental court. But there's, it's not supposed to be a revenue stream, but it is, it can be a revenue stream if, you know, folk go out and take action, but it's not a lot of stuff, it's only a couple steps.
So does our environment also maybe need more training, or, I mean, I don't know why citations are not being written?
I wouldn't say that they're not being written, people who guys who are, who are shrewd do not respond, and then they get their certified letter, then they play dodgeball, and they don't pick them up, and then the address that you have on file, sometimes it's not a good address, and so, I would not say they're not making an effort.
I think by next week, I'd like to see how many citations have been written for, probably past six months, I'd like to see how many were written.
Hey, Ms. Andrew, can you tell me about court salaries for police? On court salaries for police, we budget for fifteen thousand dollars?
They do, they, they pay a portion that goes on, they don't everybody cover it. I think they handle a ward that's maybe outside and that is certification for paying that. So I sent them a reminder because they did not pay that, so they should be paying, sending in their money.
So, okay, they didn't pay last year, so they will, they will make this year budget thirty thousand?
Yes, uh-huh, yes.
Okay, we have, what I, we're still on eight, that's correct. Um, dedicated instruments to supplement budget shortfall. Now, we've heard about the same money, do you have any suggestion on how to generate money? Or what is it that you would propose to cut, if you had to cut?
We don't have to.
You have to look at everything.
We don't have to.
We don't have to, Mary, we don't have to, we do not have to.
What would you?
You don't have to.
Look at the people that as he is, and shuffle the money as new.
You don't have to.
Because it's, it's facts, because in a month's time, since you came out with three different budgets, and no revenue changed, but the numbers changed. It went from almost a million dollars in the deficit, you brought it down to four hundred thousand. Now, is it winning green? So, you want some?
Let me ask you this, Ms. Green. Okay. There were demand being placed on the burden for numbers, and she was producing what she had at that point in time. She was still receiving in, she was, the money was still coming in, so that's why you pay multiple budgets, correct, Sam?
No.
So, I mean, you said you wanted something, so I think it's golden, give what you hand us.
So, so, Mary, you, you asked us.
Yes, sir.
What areas do you feel like should have been cut?
Well, we just have to run the numbers.
We should.
Basically, when we give you precise numbers of what it is costing the city to make the adjustment to police and fire two dollars across the board with this funding, four shifts with anticipation of pulling, peeling off shifts as we able, we're able to recruit. Ms. Goldman, her task duty provided the council with the precise dollar amount.
I, I can do it.
She, she will do it.
Okay.
Okay, because she knows with, with all the other added costs, the number of employees and the way it's calculated for police and fires calculate differently.
Before you do that, Ms. Andrew, let me, let me say something.
Okay, let me finish, Ms. Green. Okay, I want you to look at all of the other employees, every position, and run that same calculation, and see what it will cost, and give you that information. I think when you have numbers that are more precise in front of you, you can make a more informed decision.
Well, I, I can too, um, even if you factor in how you broke down to shifts, right? I think, probably can get the exact dollar amount, but it's like one million and ten thousand dollars. That's how much going into the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two budget, is that a million, a million eighty-seven thousand dollars or some change? Nothing changed, you just broke it down to shifts. It's still, it, it, to be honest, we actually overbudgeted last, last year.
It changed because we figured the two dollars, and we figured last employees.
This one, I'm telling you, Ms. Andrew, what you, what, what's that problem? If we add up, my councilmen, you grab phones out, if you add up each shift, the total, and you say the sheriff department included with that, that's gonna be a million dollars and some change. Last year, when I sat in front of you, I said, hey, you budgeted for thirty-one slots, which was a million dollars. Nothing changed, only thing you did was change how you, how you distributed.
They got two dollars a raise in that period.
I, I get what you're saying, but I'm saying the total amount never changed, so when the mayor talk about cutting money, you did. You didn't have to.
We, we, we really didn't cut, oh, yeah.
Ms. Andrew, twenty-one, twenty-two, we budgeted a million dollars. We sat here and talking about it was a six hundred and some thousand dollar surplus from just the police service. Even including with the four hundred thousand dollars, almost one thousand dollars to the sheriff department. We budgeted last year at a million dollars.
Oh, yes, yeah.
More than a million dollars.
It was nine hundred and forty-five thousand, is what we budgeted.
If you, if you get the, the first budget, hold on, I'm glad you said it, I'm, I'm sure. And this on, this on June twenty-sixth, and I, I understand. I apologize, I'm sorry. The first budget that we had was a million, not just, not the, because we had three budgets. So the first budget was at a million dollars, which was taken upon a six hundred and some thousand surplus, right, Ms. Andrew?
Yeah.
Okay, that's from twenty-one, twenty-two. Give me up, this year, we budgeting for even where you guys add each shift, that's a million dollars. And that's included with the sheriff department, so what I'm saying is, what did you cut? Because we, we didn't got three different budgets, so this one's saying, this one's saying nine hundred and some thousand, and, and sheriff department on one of them, and sheriff, you know, this one's saying nine hundred and some thousand, sheriff department, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. But last year, one of the, the first budget you gave us, we budgeted at one million dollars. One point seven, it was one point seven million dollars, we were talking about the surplus. This year, you break down the shift with the increase in, in the police department, because what you said is, there is no need to increase it, because we have this big surplus, only thing you gotta do is, spread it out over the police department, include the new police officers. So, only thing you did was budget for the two dollars raise, to cover that, and, and still had the same one million dollar budget, but I can tell y'all to do for the same thing with each department. You had the same, the same money from the first time the budget, and to the, the same exact money now with an increase in payment, we can do that for each department.
Okay, we can do it.
We didn't have to cut back then, Mary.
All right, because you said there was nine hundred thousand, six hundred thousand, so three hundred thousand went back into the general fund. They didn't use, they budgeted nine hundred and some thousand, but they didn't use the six hundred, so that was three hundred and some, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
And this, and hold up, you, you, and you missing the three hundred and some thousand dollars that went to the sheriff department. So you, if you take, if you take away the sheriff department on top of that, six hundred dollars, that's nine hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, what, what, what are your suggestions as we get ready to move forward, any other suggestions?
Well, yeah, I just wanna, like, Mr. Bradford, I'll look at budget for beautification. You got two hundred dollars, I wonder why our city look like it look, two hundred dollars. Two hundred dollars, we need to put boys there, and I don't know where you're gonna get it from, but you get it, but, get a little more than that, we can beautify our city, because when people come through, that's very important, I say two hundred dollars. They're gonna get done with your number, not need to be maybe five or six thousand dollars, anyway, just make a suggestion, make a budget. Uh, uh, that's under consideration, would you go back to the budget again?
Mr. Goldman, what was that, two hundred dollars?
It was probably something that we kept that two hundred line out all the time, I don't really remember what we used it for. Replace some of the trees, maybe around the square or something like that, remain straight.
I'm just saying, maybe we find a little more, we can do a little more trees, a little more lights, a little more lighting or something, you know? That's just a suggestion, I mean, you know, when you go back to your budget, if you can, you can understand, but if we got a lot, we got a lot of asset money into the budget, listen to Mr. Green, and Mr. Green, both Mr. Green, I want to thank them for their knowledge of numbers. And I can think that we could do it, and don't be stressful, and I think our morale, our morale employed will pick up, our city will look beautiful. You know, we can all work together, what I'm trying to say to make, we all got the same cause, make Baskin a place to live, and we all happy about, you know? That's, that's all, that's all we're saying, and, and another thing with these budgets, now, each one of these departments got a department head. They should come before the council, really, and tell the council what they need. You know, then we'll know, that, that, that don't need the ten million, we're not gonna budget for fifty of them, you know? That, that's a funny, those department heads should be sitting here, around here, I know, I know you should do it in days, in old school times, you would give me the go, my day, and we can ask them, and, and ask question that you may not, can ask, if their department head, they should have enough knowledge to tell what their department need. I see a lot of insurance, I know it's insurance, very expensive for insurance, uh, I understand it, but I also look at a fifty million, I mean, excuse me, a fifty thousand dollar miscellaneous, what does it mean, fifty thousand dollar miscellaneous?
Well, that, that's a catch-all, but if it doesn't have a line item, it's recurrent, not recurrent, then you put it in that miscellaneous.
Okay, well, fifty thousand dollars is a long way to help, get what we're trying to, you know, and maybe, maybe twenty-five thousand, that we need to be something that, and we take, you know, we, it's kind of shepherd the numbers, where, where, where we can get where, but like, like you may have said earlier, find out, you know, what num, what numbers actually we need, that's what we need to do, I think, as a council, and, and, and a body, we need dialogue more about what we can cut, and what we can put it where, and what makes the operate better. Because we have, the money's there, that question I asked you, what was the ratio, uh, City of Baskin, I think we had a whatever between a two, I'm answer that question, a two, two point, two point five, that mean we can operate, we got more money, we need to provide more service to this community. Uh, since you can answer, I'm gonna try to answer, I might, I don't know signature that. But if we are three, we should be booming, but if we are two point five, we still in a position where we can operate and provide service. Don't, don't sit on the money, provide service, hire employee, give raises, make everybody feel good about themselves. I'm, 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 I'm gonna close at two point five.
I got nothing about the budget, but what about the health and sanitation, I see salaries on here, sixty-one thousand.
Well, exactly, the animal shelter, they used to be called Health and Sanitation Department, we don't have a garbage department anymore, but that's part of it.
We paying somebody out there sixty-one thousand?
We have two employees, we have one that's a dog catcher full-time, then we have another full-time out there, we pay two employees there.
That's due to the parenthood benefits, yes. We have a responsibility for animal control, Mr. Jay.
Okay, um, so we here to amend the budget, what line items are we amending?
The, the amended was, was on there, what we spent, that's what you're amending, those are fine items there.
Say what, Ms. Andrew?
You see the first column? The first column was your twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and then you go to the, the, the third column, that's the final of the twenty, twenty-two. And then the very last on the page is the twenty-four.
I, yeah, I get the, the last, so what we doing is?
We were discussing, uh, revenue generation through dedicated instrument, it was discussion on how to deal.
Okay, so that's the next item, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mary, I moved too far, I apologize.
Okay, but technology bill, then we list that out?
That was an agreement because of amenities that is coming, it's providing an educational service, so we had a cooperative endeavor agreement with them. It actually, it relieved us of the probably about twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars in, in utility expenses.
How, how long the agreement?
Uh, they are going to, uh, thank you for asking that, Mr. Bradford. They are, they have received, or will be receiving four million dollars, and with anticipation of more money to start breaking around at a later date, so I don't have those precise dates, but they are planning to deal with the campus here.
But, but, I, that's good for them, but my question, what's a term at least?
I have to look at the.
Yes, okay.
Yes, and I can make over that.
Because, because that, that could be, that's a good facility, I think that donated by international, it was the Congress administration for one, for one dollar, I remember, I remember that contract, believe me, and we could take that building, like I said, really, and put our police department over there, getting more, utilizing, I didn't just get it somebody for nothing. I mean, we gotta, we gotta think, we gotta be able to restructure, but that's just a thought, that's why I'm here, I want, want a question. Please do not accept that one dollar for Dido, now, see, you got it for revenue, please, we need, we need to kill that. As long as they tie that building up for one dollar, we're gonna be able to do anything with it. And we, because a city, that's a building may have potential, some factory, somebody might wanna come into Baskin. But we got a building, we get one dollar a year for, and we pay it over six thousand dollars just to maintain it. Now, that, that, that's not good business.
Yeah, I think you gotta revisit it, I think you gotta revisit that resolution.
That one dollar.
On, on this technology building, we leased it out for, you know, you didn't give us the number, but why are we, in this money, maintaining it on maintenance, and we leasing it out today?
Well, we budgeted a little bit of maintenance for this coming year, because it is our building. They have completely redone some of the buildings, so we probably don't have to spend any money.
Oh, so my point exactly, what I said, oh, what?
So you want me to say?
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just, ma'am, I'm just saying that, that five thousand dollars can get back in the general fund, probably in a year, right?
I don't know about the roof or anything else, I, I don't know.
Some things we, we don't know, we cannot allocate our responsibility on a city-owned building to some, to somebody else. What we have gotten in return is a building that's over a million dollars worth of renovation, so that's the trade-off.
And I, I, I'm not referring to that at all, I'm talking about over budget, we just talking about, she just said, she not probably gonna knock on you that five thousand dollars, she come out of the money. What I'm saying is, let's go back to the general fund.
If we don't, you said it definitely, well, yes, sir.
You asked me, my opinion about ways to cut back on the budget, now, just give you my opinion.
It's not necessarily just taking that same money, you having the ideas of revenue generation. I mean, if the HVAC goes out over at the technology center, God forbid, as, as we on the last leg on this, we don't ever want your budget so strapped.
If you go out to technology building, this is, this is gonna be hard, we don't gotta utilize that building.
Well, well, since we, I'm glad you said that brought up the Dido bill also, and that we lease a building out, why don't we go in and analyze all what we have in there, and they be responsible for, you just said that, that the unit go out. If we lease it out there, why should we be responsible for something, if something come up missing? A, a AC unit on the outside that comes up stolen, if you lease a building from the City of Baskin, you should be responsible for the contents, and not us, just the Dido building, we leased that out, I don't know what happened, but when we get that building back, it's gonna be an empty shell. It's ain't gonna be, it's just gonna be. My point exactly, but when you leased it out, it wasn't like that.
It was.
It was.
Not all the way.
We probably know.
I mean, go ahead, Mr. Bradford. It's been a while. I guess, if this is, uh, Jay Green trying to say, we, we, we spending a lot of money, uh, we talking about how to make money, but it looks like we just giving a lot of money away to, you know, leasing our property out for dollars, uh, for zero dollars, and yet we maintaining it, and, you know, we paying, on those two buildings, I bet, maintaining, or we paying over twenty-five thousand dollars of money. I asked for those leases and contracts, just to go through and see what's the terms and the condition. But I was told I have to pay two dollars, I paid, I'm gonna do that, I think, I'm, I'm gonna get them, but I have to subpoena them, we are a legislative body. We do have subpoena power, now, but I hope that we can all work together, and you, just, just provide it to the council as they ask for. Don't ask me to come in on Saturday, I don't work for the City of Baskin on Saturday. I just come, I think about daily, be at, at the, at the meeting, say, be at, a council meet once a month, and any special meeting that's called. I like, be coming in on Saturday, playing a role with the employee, that don't, you gonna call, you gonna pay double time. Please, please respect this counter, say this earlier, I think we can get further, we wanna help. You know, you got, you got very intelligent council, I, I tell you, uh, I really think we can go forward to Community of Baskin if we just work together. Be open, because everybody gonna help, don't, 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 don't shut down, you know, we got money that we can provide more service to this community, let's do it. And we can give our employee and raise that too, again, I say, I say I'll rate, I, I, I said you can, I'm gonna say it, two, two point five. We in good shape, if we do the right thing.
One other question. What, now, what, I need to clarify, so what is the amount that we are going to pay for our attorneys? What is that amount? When we, I mean, because y'all expect us to adopt the budget, we need to know like the amount. And also, we need to include, in order to pay out that civil service attorney. I don't wanna discuss details, but when he, he rented a service, I, I think his last bill might have been sixteen thousand dollars, we want that paid as a council.
His whole bill is fifty thousand dollars for, so.
I find that we supposed to then, uh, break some up.
We, I think we are.
Well, okay, so.
We want it to.
Maybe, Ms. Goldman, uh, the one, fifty thousand dollars paid to Mr. Casey, we need that.
No, we take this.
And you want, uh, two dollar across the board raise for all the employees.
Point of information, Mary. Nobody said, and see, that's what I was trying to explain earlier, I'm glad this conversation just came up. I was trying to explain the difference between an ordinance and a resolution. Resolution is temporary, an ordinance is law, you mandated to pay them police officers two dollars, because she just, the mayor just stated. And nobody says, though, Mr. Lockson, he just wanted to study, no, you trying to give two dollars across the board to everybody, nobody's gonna get paid. But if you put it in a ordinance, it is law, like you said, it is law, it's mandated, an arti, I mean, a resolution is movable, see, the mayor, uh, the chief financial administrator, they can move money around when it's like that, but an ordinance is, you can't move it, it's dedicated for that purpose. A resolution, you can move money around, that's the only, that's the only thing I was trying to get you to see.
Okay, can I say something, Mary, please, about attorneys, attorneys?
It's not only agenda we are discussing, revenue generation.
Well, I think we brought up what, what, what we gonna do, but attorneys, I thought we gonna get to upon the attorney, this is just, we're just discussing for a minute, I'm gonna be real short. I really feel, and I know we can, talk to the attorneys that's here, the attorneys that's here, that the mayor want to appoint. And I'd like to go there, plan what, what, what type of service going to be, I really believe Baskin ready with all the trouble we have, the burdens we have, and this, we got a lot of stuff that we need to bring, and we don't need, need the advising, we don't need the prosecutor, we need a staff attorney with an assistant and a secretary, and I think we can be more effective in the city. I need to turn it in, that the mayor want to bring before this board, I would really like you to come forward with a proposal for a staff attorney for the City of Baskin, two attorneys to hear now, respect their profession.
I disagree with that.
Okay, I understand, we, we, we need a staff attorney. Once we set a staff at the City of Baskin, you gonna see the difference in what you're talking about enforcement code, he'll know the proper way, he's there, he's on hand. Someone come in, one citizen come in with a legal question about their property, someone there as a servant, we, if the court is, uh, operating, or choose a third, somebody there to carry on, that attorney, that city attorney, get us an assistant attorney, and his secretary, legal secretary or secretary, and carrying out the legal duties of the City of Baskin. Now, I think we need a price, everything come with a price. I can say, whoever become the attorney, you structure how you, you work with your assistant attorney, how you all gonna handle courts and facilities, and, you know, somebody, your, your secretary should be here from nine to five, eight to five is the time they open, to answer legal question, or, or take notes for you, or whatever it may be. I know she can't give me that advice, but we need attorneys, uh, five days a week, from eight to five. I would, I would really like to know, attorney that come before here for a form, present that to this council, what the cost, is that your cost, just like the marshal office. You know, the marshal office, just like the other department heads, let's set up a, a staff attorney, and we'll get more legal advice, we'll be more effective, we won't be here wondering what, what we can do, what we can't do, anything in the legal realm, that's one of those terms, are here, or there often, you know? Someone called in from something we got, agent has legal question, legal question, you hear the answer, uh, you gonna get back with it, then we gonna be more effective. I don't know what it gonna cost, but since we talking money, I really like to know, if anybody, you know, that's the type of term we need.
Um, so, one question made, so, Ms. Goldman, how are we gonna approve a budget if we're like not certain on some line items?
I don't know, uh, I don't see how y'all can, especially y'all, you've got another direction here, I'm making notes.
But just like, because if, if we vote to amend the budget, right, for legal fees, you know, we budget for sixteen thousand dollars legal fees, right? And we utilize forty-six thousand and fourteen dollars, meaning that we over, we overspent. That we amend the budget, that mean that's gonna take care of that, that's gonna take care of that over budget price, right?
Should, but I mean, I don't know.
See, that mean.
What y'all do, talk about attorneys and additional, I have no idea.
Okay, so in other, in other words, in other words, uh, councilman, is that if, if we, we overspent, so by amend the budget, that means we saying it's okay?
Well, I think, I, I, I think we agreed on more things than we disagree. To execute the, the services of the city, so to delay the budget, that means another redo of the budget, another fifteen days. We got an airport grant, there's two million dollars for runway, we got, um, million dollar lift station hanging in the balance. We have condition on this last leg, passing or adopting the budget, in my opinion, is more important than the things that we disagree on. Because anybody who works for a board, or works where, where there's a, a board of commissioners, or whatever you call them, you would not want your check delayed over things that can be resolved at a, at a certain period of time. Also, also, as we look at the numbers. as we look at the numbers, and I have Miss Lee as well as Miss Goldman, both of them are making notes of what you want, of what you are, you would like to see happen. But until you have those actual numbers in front of you, then you unable to make an informed decision. You, you have to take, okay, you take policing fire out of the equation, and you add the remainder of the, of the employees, fifty, sixty, and you run those numbers, and you see how much that's gonna cost you, then you know you faced with having to do some service, or equipment gets old, fuel adjustment. Some things we don't have control over, we have a three hundred thousand dollar electric bill, and I would venture to say that part of it is dated forty-five year old H vac system. And the clock is ticking on it. So, that is my take on it, do want your input, Miss Sandra, Goldman can run the numbers, present that information, but rather than delaying the services, cause we can only operate at fifty percent of the last approved budget. So that would take us, having to start shutting down the progress we in September.
Impossible, man, well, um, Miss Sandra, um.
Fifty percent of the last approved.
Miss Sandra, so for us to, for us to approve and amend this budget, we need to know which line items that we are amending. That's all we asked for.
But we don't have line.
Yeah, and, and, and I think the last discussion, this, this letter here from, uh, looking at a legislator, obviously, they, they stating, I think you had called, uh, had some dialogue with it, in the state, we, they would like for us to have the budget this month, if possible. And I don't think it's possible, what the date, what day, the thirtieth?
Thirty.
It's not possible. And, but we, I think, one way of going about getting it done ourselves, that why can't we have a meeting, it has to be public, with, with, with the department head, and, and, uh, with, with Miss Goldman, you know, this council, and we put, we sit down and work at the table, close section, work the numbers out, line items out, and then come out with a united budget. You know, they, they want nobody come out with something new, two days after we get rid of past the budget, and, and we all on the court. Like you said, September, what is this, August? I don't know, August, August, let's, let's, we got a regular meeting coming, on the tenth. I think we need to maybe really sit down with the, with the council, the secretary, the treasurer, I don't see a treasurer here, when we talking money. And, and the audit, they're not here, they, those are my key players on how we come with these numbers, and how we put everything in play financially for the city. We, you know, I, I appreciate this meeting, because if we, really not, we, we, may not seem like we got anything done, but we did, we got some kind of clarity. But we need to sit down as a group of government body, and, 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 and maybe going to Bennett's Island with the mayor or something, whatever, you call it, and we can sit down, and everybody talking with Miss Goldman, there's you, and let's see what we, what we got. I have this other two point five, I can say that again, doing this, and what I hear, all this over budget money, and, and, you know, what, what, what work. But I really think we need to sit down as a government body, all the regular, and sit there and go through each line item, where we can cut, and what we can increase, and try to stay within this budget. There's a lot, a lot, a lot of poke in this budget. But like I said, a lot of things, that, that, there's not enough service in this budget, though. And different department, when you give one person a twenty thousand dollar raise, I'm concerned about that. When you have a fifty thousand dollar missalane, that, uh, uh, what your budget for, if you, if that's what your budget for, and you gonna put fifty thousand dollars on the side, I think we can cut in some areas and make it happen, and give the, uh, employees a raise. The cost of living has gone up, I don't tell nobody that, but like I say, the eggs are high, they eat the same eggs that the family eat, same toast, and I think, and I bet if we give a raise, you'll see a difference in our community. I'm thinking community overall, what makes a difference. And then we, 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 if we do good thing, people will wanna come be a part of Bastrop, then more revenue. We gotta, of course, we gotta open the shop up. I'm gonna come, come in, thank you.
I have a question.
Uh, I think I heard Miss Tappin first.
Okay, can we pass a partial budget, except for the line items that we have concerns about? And then when we come back for our special meeting, Miss Goldman will have us some potential for the raises, for all employees, and our concerns will have been addressed. So can we pass a partial budget?
Okay, we have to go by the legislative budget law and, and how we pass the budget. Can't lower a budget item in a lower than what it would take to operate for one year, we just have to revisit all of the, the applicable laws, Miss Tappin, to, to see.
Okay, so.
But again, I think there are more things that we agree on, instead of coming to a point that puts brakes on the city.
Well, not, not total brakes, just partial brakes. If you're centric, just, or, or, I know you said we have Miss Lee also taking notes, if we could just get all line items that we want amended, so we can pass a budget, except for all those line items.
Yeah, Miss Sandra, cause in writing, can we get all line items that was amended?
And we can pass everything.
That was amended?
Or that we want amended.
Oh, y'all could just make a list and give it to.
Well, no, we simply take the notes, so.
Yeah, you, you can tell us in writing which.
Right now, today, you say y'all wanted to do something for the attorneys, then y'all say y'all actually.
Give us a writing, which items has been amended?
Well, they, uh, every, one of these is different. If you look at the very first column, that's the original, and if you look at the last one, that's what is amended. So when you look at those, that thing, you can say what amended.
Same.
Mr. Jay, man.
Problem, this budget, this is, this resolution, this budget, right here. If it would've been done in a proper time, that's reading the state says it has to be done on the fifteenth. So this was just all about, if we would've done this way back on the fifteenth of June, this meeting we have now, we would've been able to work out the bugs and everything, cause it's, it's by compromise, it's by, you, you, this budget you just finished today?
Right. And no, I, 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 this was done on the twentieth, when we scheduled it. This same budget, we got for the meeting of the twentieth.
Okay, the twentieth, but that was twentieth this month, right?
That's right.
I'm talking about the fifteenth.
But we scheduled three different meetings to talk about the budget. I couldn't help it, the judge, like we didn't have a formal discussion. I was here, and I've been glad to answer key questions.
What, what I'm getting at, the way it's structured, you supposed to, you should submit your final budget on June the fifteenth. You know why? Because there's eighteen or twenty days that the city council, you can bring it before the council, and you can disagree, and you go back and make changes before the, the, the first. That's, and this, this meeting we have is like forty-five days too late.
Oh, I agree.
So it should've been done, and it's not, and I'm, I'm, America, I'm a police manager. What I'm saying is the mayor said that we gonna start sharing out the departments. Well, it's not our fault that the budget wasn't done on the fifteenth.
But it's not, but we do, we are working on the twenty, twenty-one budget.
But, but, but it's not fair to our constituents to just bring us up.
They deserve better, I agree.
We have to sit down with them and say, what do y'all want?
So, okay, tonight, y'all have it. And maybe we did accomplish something, but I'm pretty sure we didn't accomplish enough. But I did take notes, and I'm gonna make those notes with the mayor's approval, to do whatever y'all tell me to do. Mainly is to look out for the two dollars for everybody that is not a farming employees. That's the major cost changes that we're doing on this budget. And for us to pay, to try to pass part of it, when that's a big factor, I don't know how you can be part of this and not part of the other, I just don't know how to do it.
I don't see, I don't see.
And I do not want to just do smoking, mirrors, I wanna be up honest on the record, I don't know how to do it.
Well, here, here's, here's the thing we're being curious about, we have a proposed budget of twenty-three, twenty-four, which we also have on the agenda to amend the twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
That's right.
So, this, like, we talking about two different things.
But, but that's to be done like this. They want to say amended, and they wanna say it side by side, this is their form.
So, Miss Sandra, going into twenty-three, twenty-four, but we trying to amend the twenty-one, twenty-two.
Right, but the.
We trying to amend the twenty-one, twenty-two to take, to take place for all the amendments that took place.
Right.
Addition factor in the potential raise, we trying to go from twenty-three to twenty-four. We should be talking about what's, what took place that we need to amend from these previous budgets, not, don't, we, we, we all over the place, we can't.
We are, can, can, can we, can we talk after the meeting?
Yeah, I, I've been trying to say that, the mayor want a lot.
I've tried to call every lane to give everybody a fair chance to, to speak. Now, I will say this, in all fairness, Miss Goldman and I worked some long hours. And in a perfect world, if it were, the budget were prepared on the fifteenth, there are a lot of agencies don't have them ready on the fifteenth. For weakness, Miss Goldman's daughter, and untimely transition, the demands that have been on her, and to demand as, we are all human, and we all want consideration. And she did her best, our best, to give you what you needed. We put out information when we knew it was big to. Some good, some bad, the good was she proceeded in money, which gave more accurate picture. She paid bills, which helped to reflect a more accurate picture. So I think everybody has made notes, I think everybody has made some statements. Are we ready to move on to, um, item? What they need?
Your own thing.
Item B, resolution twenty-three, twenty-four, to amend in the consolidated budget general fund and all special revenue funds for revenue expenditures for the City of Bastrop, Louisiana, for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-two, and ending July thirty, twenty twenty-three, and adopting consolidated budget general funds and all special revenue funds, revenue and expenditures for the City of Bastrop, Louisiana, for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-three.
Hey, Mayor, I, I, I'd like to table this, um, this item to the, the next meeting, the council meeting, which be August the eighth?
I'll select that.
August the what? Ten, I'm sorry.
Did you make a motion?
I, I did make the motion.
I'll select it. If you take it to the next meeting, will you read it?
And second, to table, resolution twenty-three, two zero four two, um. All, any question? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Two roll call, Miss Goldman.
Miss Moore? Yes. Mr. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr., uh, James Green?
Yeah, okay. You speaking in my phone, wait?
Yes.
Mr. Derek Green?
Yes.
Mr. Locke?
Yes.
There, oh, yes, it's.
All right, that brings us to resolution twenty-three, twenty-four, three, fiscal year, uh, the aviation priority program, what does that put us in terms of, how do we budget, um, prepare? Come on to the mic, Mr. Helso.
Good evening, Mayor.
I mean, I have one adopted, it's prepared.
Hi, what this is, is, uh, every year we're required to, uh, send a, basically, a list into the F A A, explaining what we wanna do with the, uh, funds that they've budgeted to us over the next five years. And they work with us to develop the plan and decide where those funds should be spent. And so basically, all we have to do is say that, yep, we plan on doing this, and we send that to them. And a little bit come back next year, this will all have changed, we'll have different projects, we'll make the numbers have changed, and we'll reset it again. But it's just letting them know what we plan to do with our entitlements that they provided to us. Do you want to have a question?
And both of these are funded one hundred percent between the state and the F A A, too?
Correct, yes.
May I move, uh, fast, the resolution? Twenty-three, twenty-four.
I'll say.
Oh, they miss, okay, Mr. Goldman, something was due in, in Baton Rouge, August the third.
Is this? I just can't imagine.
Yeah, this one goes to, uh, Louisiana, Mexico, F A A commission. The, uh, statement, I think, is a couple of months later, the F A A just moved their plates up.
Okay. All right, um, thank you. I think that covers everything.
Yes, ma'am, basically, I believe.
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, okay. I'll entertain a motion on resolution twenty-three, twenty dash.
Motion on the floor.
I think you see the.
Discussion, discussion, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Counselor, Mayor.
The item D, discussion and action, L C D, D G sewer, fiscal year twenty twenty-two, good. Mr. Goldman, you gonna speak to that?
Yes, ma'am, I have it, ma'am.
A little less than a million dollars, is this gonna throw us off on that one? Cause we do have a bad.
No, Liam, we, um, we just need to do a budget at some point, for sure. This is the L C D G grant, and this is to the unity area, new lift station, and some of the name line, replacing that. Um, it was a letter from Volker, they recommended the low bid, or weaker construction, Inc. of Shreveport, Louisiana. Their low bid was one million, eleven thousand, eighty-three dollars. They were, they had an alternate bid of seventy-three thousand, eight twenty-six, and an alternate two bid, which was ninety-four, seven eighty-one. And the difference in the alternate one and two, as they were cambering, they found in that area was lower. Sewer main that needed to be replaced, so if we decide to go ahead and replace those while we're there, they'll do all alternate one and two. And if you don't wanna do it, then that would be just the bank's thing. We put it in the sewer use fee budget to do all of them, just in case I went that direction.
Okay. Have heard, uh, the information provided by Miss Goldman, uh, discussion on the L C D D G sewer grant on Union Street.
What's on, do you play for that?
It's the L C U B G, and our match will become out of the sewer use fee budget, cause we have to have a match.
What's the match?
The match is probably gonna be around, um. The match is gonna, the cost of that's gonna be one point, one million, and the state is giving us ninety-nine, nine hundred, nine nine thousand, five hundred dollars, so the difference will be our match.
About two thirds of, uh, sewer passes through that, and that is over in, uh, low economic region, it's been needed, so, what is your pleasure?
I like a motion to accept a bid for, for the Union Street, a project.
Second.
Probably move to the second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, at this time, all in change.
Hello, Mayor, I have.
Yes, sir.
I would like to, when we came to the city council meeting, we had, I guess the eternal general themes that we've pretty much been waiting for for some time. I, I would like to expand and then to discuss.
I'll say.
Okay, there is a request on the floor to, by Mr. Green, to expand the agenda to discuss the Attorney General's, uh, letter, and to second by, this is Tappin. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, okay.
For one particular item we've been just waiting.
Public comment.
Oh.
That's right. Public comments as it relates to this expanded portion of the agenda, project. They're being, uh.
Okay, there's one particular item we've been waiting for was, uh, that the mayor have the, the authority to appoint an interim attorney. So we just received the bag, and. So we just received back, and as briefly as I read, because it was just handed to me that, that the mayor was not able to appoint an interim attorney, being that that happened, what do we, where do we stand in this particular situation?
Okay. Okay.
Because, uh, the reason why, it's, it's vital, because being that you appointed an interim attorney without the consent of the council, we have paid an attorney that wasn't approved by this particular, by this board. So, or the state of the council, we wanna know what we, what we do about the fund that was paid, and also, you made the, you made the recommendation to, to do the interim position without our consent.
Okay, and he was paid as an advisor.
So that means the legal fee department, the legal fee.
Paid him as an advisor.
So which, which, which.
To get me through the, the audit, and some of the issues that I needed.
Which line item would that be, what, which line item would that be, he be paid out of?
Uh, Ms. Goldman.
I paid it as a late on, what I.
And this one, and this one, the items on the budget that need to be amended. So if we was to approve it, then you would approve that payment.
And, well, if a bill has been created, then you create another legal situation.
But, but.
Also.
Mayor.
It al- it also states that we had only one attorney. And what do you do when a council refuses to vote? I brought, I brought the attorney before he settled time, while I was drowning.
But did, did Mr. Pierre refuse to do that, do it?
Yeah, Mr. Pierre already done civil and criminal, he get the. Well, I take, I mean, I take my job seriously. Okay, when you take your job seriously, okay, and I'm sure this council, take your council seriously. And what you did was out of order by, had Mr. Jones, four thousand dollars a month, when you took care, during both of the last two years, civil and criminal, until we got through this, I hope that you bring an attorney before this, before this council, that's acceptable by the council, and don't do that ever again, to go out and try to go around the council with, it's just a name change game you play. You know, I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give you a title, uh, as, as, as a, as a my advisor. But I think, I think, I think, I think, let me finish, please.
But not if.
How did it spend, been sold? No, I'm not insulting you, ma'am, I'm just trying to share, I think that's what you did, it was inappropriate. And this, and this, and this, and this respect to the council, desire. This council, this city government run by the majority vote of the council. Not our personal opinion, if someone wanna do, I disagree with the majority, I goes along with the majority, that's what the, uh, charter said.
Okay.
Okay, now, I can't jump up and go take on daily, daily operation, I can't go out and, and, and say, hey, let's redo the acquisition system this way, but it's got to come before the council. I can't come out and, and, and say, we gonna spend two million dollars, two million dollars, I, I really believe you, you know, gonna build this building for two million dollars. But anyway, I'm, I will leave that alone, because that's, that's your duty, but I think that would happen, I think we'll get past it. I think, if, any council you wanna present, before this council, should come with a resume, and tell us what, what it's intend, uh, he intend to do, cause we have a right to approve your appointment. And please do not go around the council in a mode, and Mr. Jones, you got no twenty-five, thirty, forty dollars of public community money, and I hope that you really take under consideration the reimbursement, and, 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 and that keep, but the all, illegal, uh, the criminal legal stuff, the criminal legal stuff gonna take in place.
Now, okay.
I, I, that's, that's my thought, I'm talking to Mr. Jones, and, and he, he listening, and he know what.
Can I say something again?
One, just a minute, Mr. Green. Okay, are you gonna ask Mr. Pierre to reimburse, same time?
Well, well, well.
Have he received?
Well, well, wait a minute, for a minute. Did, did you, if he received any money, but not approved by this council, he gotta reimburse it, I had no.
You won't come to reimburse?
But, but. We didn't follow the law through all.
Right, right, right.
Okay, Mr. Green, you had a comment, and I'm gonna ask you, uh, uh, most of your journey.
Yeah, well, my, my comment was based off, uh, being that we, um, we just received back the attorney general opinion that he was able to do the interim attorney position. So being that you also made payments to Mr. Devin, and now here we are. I'm just asking a question.
So you didn't, I'm not playing the best interest of the.
Mayor, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm just asking a question.
Yes, sir.
So now, being that we, we have to amend the budget, so my question would be, if we was to amend the budget for the legal fee line item, we, and we was to vote on amending the budget today, if we all voted, and then we said we want to amend the budget, would that, would that would have covered his, his payments?
Okay, if the service has already been, you never wanted to listen to Mr. Jones, I have brought an appointment before this body, uh, beginning in, in November.
But you can, you can do it.
I brought a, I brought.
No, I'm saying, you, you can, you can make, you can appoint an interim attorney, that's what we saying, attorney general stated, being that, being that you did, you appointed an interim attorney, without having authority to do so, what do we do about that?
He was paid for legal advice, you still for me?
You listen to what I'm saying.
I'm not missing the point, Mr. Green, I'm not missing the point at all, because Mr. Pierre, so, so are you making, are you saying?
I'm not, I'm not.
Only, only the mayor can make a point, and, and the council confirmed, you confirmed Mr. Mr. Pierre.
In a meeting, in a meeting, you, you, you announced Devin, and we, we didn't know, right? And you said, well, I'm gonna make him an interim attorney.
I did say that, and then.
The law says that you cannot do so.
Okay, I read the letter, I, Mr..
So, so I, so can you explain to the council, what steps do we have to take at this moment?
Okay, I, you do whatever you think you need to do, because I tell you what, I need what I need to protect this city. And with audit issues, weakness in the audit, and not, not having access to the, to the guidance, Mr. Mr. Jones paid as a vendor, as a, as a, to provide assistance to me, of course, the city.
Well, me should be, I, I, me, you should be, that's what I said, I, I, I said, you should be. And, and, you know, you gonna be facing, man, feeding, man, and I go, I, I, I really think.
No, I'm not, and I'm not gonna argue.
No, we're not gonna argue, I said, I.
I don't even take the motion to adjourn this meeting.
Thank you, I, I, I motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Okay.
I just have it.
All in favor? Any opposed, this meeting is adjourned.